Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker. Mr. Irving.
Yes.
Dr. Testaverde. Almost.
There she is.
Okay. Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mr. James.
Present.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Present.
Ms. True.
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Present.
Mr. LaSage. And myself, present. So, welcome to the June 10th, 2020.
It looks that way, Kevin. Thanks. You're a doll. Bye.
Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, Thank you. I will go to public comment. Comments can be emailed in advance of the 6:30 PM start time to Seren. All comments will be recorded to the record and all attempts will be made to mention them live during the meeting. Any emails received during the meeting before the public comment periods will also be attempted to be mentioned. Additionally, public comment can be made via Zoom teleconference as instructed on the notice of the meeting. There is three minutes per person and a total of 20 minutes total for public comment. Is there any public comments? None being heard. Let's move ahead. Approval of minutes. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
These are the May 13th meetings.
Second.
We've got to take a roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood. Not here. Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Tucker's not here. Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Okay. Treasurers' report for May. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Hi.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Okay. We've got another vote. The annual vote to borrow from time to time if necessary. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Okay. Old business, the superintendent's evaluation. Are there any questions, comments, or does anybody want to? Ms. True.
I just had a question. I noticed that this time the comments were left out, but you know, the pie chats were, you know, very helpful and everything, you know, but at the end I thought maybe there would be some comments because we did that one time, but I guess maybe for for this year, we just left them out. Pie chats were impressive though, whoever did that.
Yeah.
Those comments, Lisa?
What? I didn't hear you, Dave. What?
Are you able to get the comments specifically were written?
Yeah.
At some point.
Yeah, I, yeah, they don't come out on this thing when you put it through, so I would, I'll, I'll get them to you.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's not like any big deal. I was just curious to, you know, to see what, okay, anyway. I'm sure they're all glowing, Maureen, but I just wanted to check.
Not sure about that, but I'm choking on.
Most of them.
The pie chat was very helpful to look at.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, so we got a vote on that. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Okay. And there are no reports from the student representative. Do we know who our do we know who our next year's representative is?
We do not at this time.
Okay. We've got a retiree recognition, recognition. Maureen.
So we have three retirees, actually a fourth retiree gave me word yesterday, so first and certainly not least is Ms. Roxanne Grover. She was hired in November 1978. She worked as a health physician teacher for many years along with various stipend positions throughout her tenure at Whittier. Roxanne is someone who has been a great leader at Whittier. She has done a phenomenal job. She's done the peer-to-peer group. She's done a lot of community grants, the Shannon Grant. She's hoping that she can continue that with that next year. She's from Hayrow and she, she lives and breathes our school and our students and I don't know if any of you saw on Facebook, there was a picture of her graduating with the rest of the class of 2020 and the comments on, on it where, oh, Grover's leaving, I can't believe it, you know, she meant an awful lot to so many kids. So we wish her, you know, obviously a ton of luck, but she keeps telling me to find something for her because she wants to come back. Be on the wellness committee. He'll be definitely a substitute teacher anyway. Next is Sue Josephs. Many of you know Sue from the program. She was hired in 1991 as a teacher aide. In 1994, she was hired as the hospitality instructor. During her tenure at Whittier, she was the interact club advisor with the Rotary Club and was instrumental in taking students to senior centers for the Whittier District luncheons. You know, she was one of, she was one of our community leaders or liaisons when it came to doing some senior dinners within our community. I'd like to wish her for luck for her many years of dedicated service and whoever thought this, her, her tenure would end the way it has. Next, he, Mr. Ragusa, Mike Ragusa, an auto tech teacher heard yesterday that he is planning on retiring. He's been an instructor at Whittier since 2004. And I would like to thank him for his many years of dedicated service to Whittier and wish him luck in his retirement. He was somebody that always had a smile and knew Italian, so he would teach us Italian words when we wanted to order at restaurants and whatnot. A true gentleman and a great man, and I really luck in his retirement. And certainly last but not least is, is our good friend Beverly DeSalvo, our vocational coordinator. She was hired in August 1994. She was hired for data processing instructor and is leaving us as vocational technical coordinator. She was also an assistant principal for a year. That's when I first met Mr. Salvo, the assistant principal.
Heard that.
Yeah, she said she couldn't wait to get out of there. Disciplining students was not her forte. She's so, you know, I wish everyone luck in their retirement. I'm, I'm really sad that this is how we're, we're having to celebrate their retirement. I know we had plans and parties things to celebrate their work at Whittier and, you know, hopefully once things settle down here, we'll be able to do those kinds of things. I wish those retirees a lot of luck. Want me to move right into the superintendent report?
Yeah, move right in, please.
Before you tonight, personnel actions, hires for credit for life advisors and voter challenging program coordinators. As you can see, those are both grants and that is work that we hope to have completed before the end of the year. We have a resignation of a evening school secretary. Budget update. I, I didn't, I left that blank because there is no update. We have still not heard anything about where we going, where we are going to be for next year. We did submit a 112 budget to the state as, as required and every, I think every school district in the state has done that. But we still do not know what monies will be coming in from the state to fulfill Chapter 78. So I wish I had more information about that, but I do not. Whittier Tech is running an online MCAS summer program from July 6th through July 30th. Mondays and Thursdays, 10 AM to 12:30. Students will get remote learning in English, math, science. This program will be offered to all current 9, 10, and 11th grade students. We did cancel discovery program this year just because the, the guidance didn't come out. And actually, I'm not sure even with the guidance, if it would have been possible for us to have run that program because the guidance was pretty rigid. As most of you know, we should be receiving guidance by D E S I on how we're going to open up the next school year. And we are supposed to receive that guidance no later than June 15th. Right now, we have been working on several different schedules for next year in anticipation of that guidance. There's one thing we know for sure is that we will have a hybrid model. We will both be in our school building and doing remote learning. The commissioner has been very clear that that is the model that we will be looking at for next year. For academic week, we're looking at only four courses, English, math, science, and social studies. And then the students will be able to do their trade work on that other week. We've set up three different task force, one on remote learning, student wellness, and facility management. I'm pleased to say that we have over 60 people interested in being a part of these task force. And we're going to set goals based on the guidance and then begin to work on how we can open up for next year with those, with that guidance. Kara and I continue to reach out to our elected officials. Today, we spoke to Senator DiZoglio. We're looking for answers about where we're going to be with the state budget and when that information will be coming. You know, the, the more questions we ask, the more questions we end up having. So we'll continue to work through that. The one good thing is we do have town meetings. Our town meetings have been set up, so Monday, June 15th is Merrimack and Georgetown. Monday, June 22nd, there are town meetings in Rowley, Groveland, and Salisbury. Tuesday, January 23rd, there's a town meeting in Newberry. And Saturday, June 27th, there are town meetings in Ipswich and West Newberry. Though, we are hoping to be able to attend. Some of them have told us we should not attend that they're, you know, about six feet apart. Some of them will be outside, some of them will be in cars. I think, just like graduation, everybody's trying to find that, have that, that sweet spot as far as being able to hold these meetings while keeping the socially distant. So, are there any questions I can answer for anyone at this point?
Maureen, what about our childcare program?
Right now, we don't have any children in the childcare. And if, if you've read anything about the requirements, we're going to have to look at the why about whether some of those programs can be possible the way they are right now.
I keep hearing a lot of them are going to be closing.
Yeah, it, it's pretty hard and, and you know, and thinking about what next year will look like as far as being half in and half out, how families are going to manage daycare and school and, you know, working with us. It's, we're going to have to be flexible when working with people because it's pretty tough right now.
Yeah. Charlie?
Yeah. Have you heard anything about classroom size? A friend of mine, a teacher at Triton and their superintendent told them, looks like it's going to be 10 students per classroom.
See, D E S I came out with that, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
I think, you know, obviously that depends on how big your classroom is. But they do want you to be six feet apart. So maintenance is working on a few things with us tomorrow. We're going to do a mock-up classroom to see what that would look like in some of our classrooms. But yeah, it's, it's, it's going to be a challenging
Even the buses. Bus transportation is an issue.
Same thing.
Maureen, what is the average academic class size?
About 22.
That means, that means 2.2 classes for every subject.
Right. Right.
Woo.
Don't worry about it. I got plans.
And no money. Miracle workers.
I got I mean, we all remember the baby boom, right? So there were a lot of kids in one class. It's just we're going to have big classrooms to accommodate them.
During two and a half, I had 39 kids in my classroom. Half in the hall.
Yeah, we can't have that, but yeah, that's, that was a reality, right? It was crazy.
What about
There's also talking about double sessions, I've heard.
Tuning.
I got plans.
Yeah, I know you do.
As Kevin Williams just texted me, like you keep changing your plans, but I got plans.
You can be like on your feet.
I have plans for us being back to school full-time. I have plans for us being back to school halftime. I, I, it's all going to be fine. Don't you guys worry.
What about
This is being videotaped, right?
Well, protective equipment. Is school required to supply that?
Yes, a lot of it. Yep, with, with a shortfall in the budget, so it's interesting times, you know, we're being required to have a significant amount. And again, the guide on the D E S I website about what they're telling schools to open up with. Basically, we should have masks for every student, for every day, teachers, you know, hand sanitizer, PPE, sanitizing classrooms. It's, it's significant.
What about the restrooms?
Same thing. Same thing. So our maintenance staff, you know, we've been working with them and again, a lot of hopefully with that task force that we're setting up, they're going to be able to answer a few of those questions and, and work through what makes them comfortable as well, so it, it, there's no doubt next year is going to be a challenge.
Well, okay, just one quick one. Does that mean on the buses, we have to disinfect the buses every night? Okay.
Yes. We have a plan. Plans. And we're ready to pivot. Now, that's my favorite word. Chris tells me it's a hockey word, pivot. Oh.
It is.
It is. My favorite word right now. And then we'll pivot, and then we'll pivot.
Do a pirouette.
Yeah. You know what? At the end of the day, we, we have to be prepared for multiple scenarios. Things change, are changing very quickly and they change day to day, week to week. And we, we have to keep the focus about what we need to do for our kids and and, and our staff and making sure it's a safe environment. You know, I think you've heard from us for years, you know, safety and security of our buildings are number one priority. Well, you know, I always thought the security part was first, but really the safety part next year is, is going to be a real focus. And, you know, we want to make sure everyone feels safe to come back to school. We're going to make sure that we have, you know, various plans set up so that we can get back to a new normal and have people back in the building, so.
And apparently, Maureen, the MIAA is also taking some making some decisions as well. I don't know if you've heard that.
I, I've heard that they're still hopeful for fall athletics.
They are.
Yeah.
Because I'm on the track committee and they're planning a full fall schedule.
I hope they're right. Yeah.
Me too. I just heard it was tiered, Charlie.
Yes.
So the cross-country golf would be first tier?
Yes.
Oh, okay. There'll be more guidance coming forward. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, I can't share with you more about what our plans could be, but I really, until we have that June 15th information, you know, it's, we, we can't really put anything out there until we have that information to know that we're, we're in step with, with what's going to happen. I can tell you, the Commissioner of Education has said it will be a very prescribed model. And, you know, every school should be looking at that hybrid model because if you're, you are not, then you better, that's going to have to get cleared by the department and and they're going to have to have some good reasons as to why they're in or out full-time, so, all right.
All right. Oh, you got one more item on your list, Maureen.
Oh, acceptance of donations. In your packet, there is a page from Kara Cosmos, a page and a half of donations, and I would really like to thank those people that have donated equipment and, you know, people that off-sent balances for our kids. So just really thank you to everybody. I mean, our, some of our families have, have gone through a really difficult time and your donations will definitely help alleviate some of their angst about some of their lunch balances, so I want to thank people very much.
We need a vote for this. It will do it collectively for all, all the items. Do we have a motion?
Move to accept with gratitude.
Okay.
Any questions or comments? Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on.
I have a question for the superintendent. How are we making out with the building?
Specifically, what do you mean?
The new building, the design, are we, did we make the list?
Oh, yeah, we're, we're, we, we have a meeting. It really begins for us, it's beginning on July 1st.
All right.
That's when our, our work will really begin.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Lagasse, principals' update.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and rest of the school committee members. As part of our senior graduation week celebrations, we held the virtual presentation of our senior awards night on our YouTube channel, which took place at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, May 20th. During the virtual presentation, we announced academic and vocational awards, as well as the scholarships were awarded that night. You can find the link on our YouTube channel if you're interested in, in logging on. Also, thank Mr. Priscelli for that as well and we helped, we also held an optional socially distance, as you heard from this in-person graduation event for the class of 2020 on May 27th, 28th, and 29th at the Whittier Tech Field, the new field. All three nights were beautiful and students' parents represented themselves and the school with a lot of class and grace. Everyone followed the protocols, which were required for health and safety of all involved for that, those nights. We were so excited to be able to have this in-person event and we were able to acknowledge the incredible achievements of the class of 2020, and again, congratulations to all. As for the rest of the student body, the students and staff continue to move forward with our remote learning and continue to come up with creative lessons to keep students engaged. I believe our last day is June 22nd. And virtual meetings with administrators, and I know Superintendent Lynch is happy to see me every morning at 9 o'clock and hear me. Administrators, cluster chairs, you know, academic and vocational clusters continue to happen on an ongoing basis. And I just want to say congratulations to all the staff, students, parents for continuing to fight during these unprecedented times, as well as the school committee. That's all I have for you tonight. Any questions?
Do we know the percentage of participation in the graduation?
I, I had, so I had a list run of about 316 kids and close to 300 names were read during those three nights, so we had a very good showing.
Excellent.
Good job.
It was a team, team effort.
All right, thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Kara, Business Managers' Report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and members of the committee. I'm asked for a transfer and that's in your packet, and I just want to give you a little bit of an explanation as to why we are doing this. As you're there, the state revenues have taken a huge hit due to COVID-19. And we have been advised to plan on reductions to our Chapter 70 funding for next year. It's unclear, as Ms. Lynch said earlier, what these reductions will look like, and so far, we've had no date given to us as to when we might even expect these revised numbers. So I've been on a lot of Zoom calls, particularly with the Department of Ed Finance Department, and it's been strongly recommended by both them as well as the Department of Revenue, that regional school districts supplement our FY '21 revenues with funds from excess and deficiency. And the E and D funds that we wish to use from our certified FY '19 balance, that's the certified balance. Because they will be no longer certified after June 30th, 2020, which is the way the law works, they wouldn't be available us, to us to use as a revenue after June 30th. So any use of the certified E and D must be voted by you now in order for us to be able to use it as a source for our FY '21 budget. So I've been advised by the Finance Department of Ed is the best way for the school committee to do this is to vote to increase, vote to approve a decrease in Chapter 70 revenue and an increase in E and D revenue by the same amount, which is how the transfer request has been worded, and we have put in a request for $500,000 of our E and D. It's also been recommended that regional districts not use all of their certified E and D as the revenue source. So just for your information, our 19, FY '19 E and D was certified at $735,339. After the transfer, we will still have an E and D balance of $235,339. Do you have any questions?
If we vote to reduce Chapter 70, does that mean we can't avail ourselves of that if it actually is available later on, if the state decides that the money is there?
No, this is precautionary. What would happen is if we had additional Chapter 70 funds, which actually happens to us pretty much every year. We get more than we vote. It flows back into E and D at the end of the year. So the worst case scenario is we would put money back in that we did not have to use next year. It's just because we do not know what these cuts are going to look like. This was a very strong suggestion by the Department of Ed and Department of Revenue so that we can withstand cuts. Our whole purpose is not to increase any assessments at all. We want to maintain what we have, if not reduce what we have.
Okay, thank you, Kara.
You're welcome.
Charlie?
Yeah. Are there any funds going to be left over in the capital projects account? Are there any funds going to be left over in the capital projects account after the field is done?
I don't know that yet. We, we still have Phase 3 of the capital projects. We've allocated about $350,000 for that. So I, I can't tell. They will not start work on that project till July, so I really don't have an answer to that. There may be, there may not be. But we could only use it for capital if it were left over.
Was that right?
I believe so, yes.
We can't, we can't funnel it back into the E and D and then use it?
You know, I don't know. That's a question I would have to contact the state on if we were in that situation, so I, I can't.
They're going to be all right with the $500,000.
We have a plan.
Pivot, good pivot, Kara.
Yes. Head on a swivel, as the hockey coaches used to say.
Yes.
All right, so we need to vote on the general fund revenue transfer. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Any more questions or comments? I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Mr. Fitcher?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to committee chairperson, the June annual agenda items, policy updates.
We haven't noticed this evening.
Right, I saw that there were quite a few by the looks of it. The summer meeting schedule, I don't believe we're going to deviate from the original schedule. We are going to have a July meeting?
I think it would probably be a good thing for us to have a July meeting. Hopefully, we'll have more information about how next year is going to look at that for July.
We really don't need to vote then because we're not changing anything.
Right.
Mr. Tucker will be happy.
Oh, that's right. Loves a July meeting, yeah.
Maybe you'll count to the next one.
What's your date on the July meeting again?
Seven, eight.
Seven, July 7th?
Eight.
Eight, July 8th, okay.
Yeah, July 8th. Okay.
Brett, one more thing that was left on is the looking for delegates for the joint conference, the MASC, MASSS conference in the fall. I assume they might still be having it in November.
Maureen, have you heard anything on that?
All I can tell you is they canceled the superintendent's meeting in July. I would be doubtful if they can have that meeting at a hotel in, in the fall, but I don't know.
Lisa or Maureen, if you have contact, let us know.
Absolutely.
I mean, if they open up, they're going to have to schedule with the hotels and so on. And November's a little bit down the line, but still understandable.
I don't remember receiving anything in the mail from MASC. Has anybody received anything?
We got the forms, I've got them.
Oh, yeah. We got the booklet, I think.
Forms for the 4th through the 7th of November, so it's, it's a work in progress, I guess. At this point in time, no one knows. I just brought it up because it has been an agenda item the last few years.
True.
Well, we can, we can revisit it in July.
If I hear anything, I'll make sure to, to send it out to you all.
Yeah, because we want to get the early bird, whatever, rate.
It'll be August 15th, no.
All right, we'll move on to subcommittee reports. Executive did meet on May 20th. The meetings are in the packet and we do need a motion and a vote to accept. All right, roll call, Mr. Early?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Mr. Fitcher? Okay. Thanks. Instructional personnel, Dr. Testaverde.
We haven't met in at this point until we start dealing with new scheduling, et cetera, et cetera. I don't think there will be a need for a meeting unless Maureen sees something sooner.
Maybe in July, just to update you about where we're, we're moving our plans for next year. Probably be a good idea in July.
Do you want to set a date?
Why don't we do that at the July meeting?
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Plant operations, Mr. Tucker's not here, but it sounds like plant operations are pretty busy, even though there's no one there.
Again, you know, maybe we can, I, I, plant operations, to be honest, I'm going to have to share with the entire committee in July and August about what we're doing. So I think it would be an entire committee, not just a subcommittee at that point.
Okay, so we just do it at, at the regular meeting or?
I'll give an update about the plant ops.
Okay.
Good.
All right, salary negotiations, Mr. Early?
Have not met. I don't believe we have to meet right now, do we, Superintendent?
We are definitely going to need to meet once we get a budget. Until we get that Chapter 78, it's hard to negotiate a salary. We have one administrator right now that we do not have, will be working next year without a contract or starting July 1st without a contract, so. Hopefully, once we, again, once we get the, the Chapter 70 funds to know what we're looking at, that will be the first meeting we need to, to schedule.
Thank you.
Policy, Mr. Irving?
We have not met, but as you see before you on the agenda, we have a slate of policies for the second and final reading. They begin with BEDH and they end with JGH slash or dash R. So if there are any questions or policies, we're in your packet. Any, any questions that we can answer, Superintendent can help answer. Most of them, we're cleaning up policies. We had done a lot of work back in December and January. Actually, November, January through January, but the MASC has added a lot of new terminology or words. So they cut some things out and added things. So what we've done is tried to clean that up with the help of Lisa and, and the superintendent and the committee. So they are in the packet. I don't know if anybody has any questions. I would move that for final, second meeting and final reading to be adopted.
Move to accept.
Back in.
Any questions or comments? Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Mr. Fitcher?
Yes.
We also have in the agenda tonight, the second re, correction, the first reading. The slate beginning with IHAM and ending with JRD. Can I present that for the first reading?
Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Irving?
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Mr. Fitcher?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to thank Lisa Rand and also Maureen, our work on the policy as well as the committee going through it. It sometimes is, it's kind of tough just reading through some of these. But with their help, we've added and subtracted, and I think it will serve the Woodya District well that is now in place. Thank you.
Moving on to the regular school committee meeting, there will be a meeting on July 8th at 6:30, the usual time. New business, there is no new business posted. We will have an executive session and if I read something. Lisa, can you help me for a minute?
We didn't like what's on the, right on the agenda there under executive session, that you need a motion to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, right on the third, to the agenda, read it like that.
Okay. Hang on a second, you lost me there for a minute.
On the, right under executive session on the agenda?
Yep.
Says, no.
Okay.
So say you, you need a motion to discuss strategy with respect to.
All right, okay, we don't have to do anything about remote or anything like that.
No, what, the meeting's going to be.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
Say it's, you can say.
All right, executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. WREA, support staff, teaching assistants, and non-union personnel, 12-month staff. We need a vote to go into executive session. Roll call, Mr. Early?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella? Mr. Irving?
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Mr. Fitcher?
Yes.
Okay.